City Council Caucus Meeting to Order for October 13th, 2015. We have two public hearings, if the Clerk would read those.
Public Hearing Number One regarding the Proposed 2016 Budget. Public Hearing Number Two regarding the Abandonment of Water Street.
And then for Original Consideration, Item Number One.
Item Number One, under Original Consideration, a Resolution Authorizing the Sale of 848 Stanley Street.
Discussed in Committee without Objection on Consent, Item Number Two.
Item Number Two, a Resolution Authorizing the Sale of a 35 by 18 parcel directly behind 1722 Broadway.
Discussed in Committee without objection on consent, item number three.
Item Number Three, a Resolution transferring title to 866 and 868 Eastern Avenue to the Land Reutilization Corporation of the Capital Region.
Discussed in Committee without objection on consent, item number four.
Item Number Four, a Resolution, Schenectady is the Place to be an Official City Song.
This will be taken out of order, Mr. Ferrari will present that, item number five.
Item Number Five, a Resolution declaring October to be Italian-American Heritage Month.
This will also be taken out of order, Mr. Riggi will make that presentation, item number six.
Item Number Six, a Resolution Recognizing the Hundredth Anniversary of the Sons of Italy Lodge 321.
Also out of order with Mr. Riggi presenting, okay, item number seven.
Item Number Seven, a Resolution Recognizing the Month of October as Stop Domestic Violence Month.
This will also be taken out of order, Ms. Parrazo will present that, and item number eight.
Item Number Eight, a Resolution declaring the Month of October 2015 to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Also out of order, Ms. Porterfield will present that one, item number nine.
Item Number Nine, a Resolution Authorizing the Sale of Adjacent Lot to 8 LV Street.
Discussed in City Development and Planning this evening, without objection on consent, item number 10.
Item Number 10, a Resolution Authorizing the Sale of 111 McLehman Street.
Also discussed in Committee this evening, without objection on consent, item number 11.
Item Number 11, a Resolution Authorizing the Sale of 1055 Pleasant Street, it's a vacant lot.
Also discussed this evening, without objection on consent, item number 12.
Item Number 12, a Resolution Authorizing the Sale of 622 Lang Street.
Also discussed in Committee without objection on consent, item number 13, is it just a repeat of item number 12, and then item number 14.
A Resolution Authorizing the Sale of 521 to 523 Seneca Street.
Also discussed in Committee this evening, without objection on consent. There's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, okay, moved by Mr. Mudavaren, seconded by Mr. Riggi, all in favor, aye. I will now call the City Council Meeting to Order for October 13th, 2015, and ask you to rise for the invocation by Reverend Joseph Kelleher.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, City Council Members, fellow citizens, brothers and sisters, on behalf of the American Legion Family of Schenectady County, Divine Guardian Ministries, and the Greater Capital Region Division of the New York State Chaplain Task Force, thank you for this opportunity to perform tonight's invocation. I would like to take a brief moment to recognize the two students that are here from our current class of Community Crisis Chaplains, and thank them for their dedication and to their calling to aid our communities with spiritual and pastoral care to all in providing hope in the midst of despair, let us pray. O great Creator, thank you for both the favor and the forgiveness which you provide in our daily lives. Please be with our elected officials this evening as they deliberate on the issues concerning our city, then as they go forth to serve all of us which they represent. Be our guide as we respect one another and allow us to work together as your children, our brothers and sisters. Lord, we ask that you be with all former and active military, those who protect us each and every day, and those persecuted for their faith. God bless our city and community, God bless the state of New York, and God bless the United States of America. In your holy name, amen.
I'm going to ask Cliff Brecker to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the Clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Parrazo.
Present.
Ms. Porterfield.
Here.
Mr. Ferrari.
Here.
Mr. Kozier.
Here.
Mr. Riggi.
Here.
Mr. Mudavaren.
Present.
Ms. King.
Present. All right, we have a number of out-of-order resolutions, and I'm going to take them in a slightly different order than they were read from the agenda, and we are going to start with October as Italian-American Heritage Month and the 100th Anniversary of the Sons of Italy, Mr. Riggi.
If everyone that's come upstairs, if you look downstairs, there's a very nice arrangement, I think Dolores had something to do with that, I believe, maybe. Okay, so you did a good job. This is a resolution declaring the Month of October to be Italian-American Heritage Month, Madam President.
You have the floor.
Whereas the voyages of the Italian-born explorer Christopher Columbus, merger of European and Native American cultures, and whereas Columbus' first contact with the New World in 1492 is commemorated as a state and federal holiday every year of the month of October, and whereas the history of the city of Schenectady has been significantly influenced by the rich heritage of Italy, whereas over 5.4 million Italians immigrated to the United States between the years of 1820 and 1991, and the city of Schenectady has long been a home for one of the largest Italian-American communities in the capital district, and whereas the strength and continuing success of Schenectady, the vitality of our neighborhoods, and the effectiveness of our community depend on the distinctive and sterling qualities demonstrated by various ethnic groups exemplified by members of the Italian-American community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and City Council do hereby pause in their deliberations to proclaim the Month of October to be Italian-American Heritage Month and recognize the ongoing contributions of the Italian-American community to our great city. I move this resolution.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Parrazo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, congratulations.
Well, Madam President, we have a second resolution.
You have the floor again.
Thank you. This is a resolution recognizing the 100th anniversary of the Sons of Italy Lodge 321. Whereas the history of the venerable Sons of Italy Lodge 321 begins in 1915 with the merging of the Gabrielle di Anunzio and Ultray Ochano Lodges here in the city of Schenectady, and whereas from 1948 to 2006, the Lodge's home was located at 415 Liberty Street, home to the Columbus Hall which apart from being the heart of the center of the Lodge community, at one point served as a temporary site for the parishioners of the Knights of St. John the Baptist Church, and whereas since its exemption, Lodge 321 has been an active community member by fundraising for and contributing to several worthy causes such as scholarships for local students, mentorship programs for inner-city youths, museum support, Red Cross services, Boy Scout and Girl Scout activities, and Little League baseball, and whereas apart from the services it provides for the community, Lodge 321 provides for its members a sense of continuity with the past coupled with civic pride by bringing people together to share in the monthly homemade dinners, bocce and golf tournaments, and family picnics, and whereas in these fast-paced times, it is meaningful to organize and come together on the basis of shared community, a love of Italian culture and tradition, and the betterment of the city we all love in order to guarantee a positive outlook for the future. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and City Council do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize the 100th anniversary of the Ordine Vili di Italia 321 and hold it up as a positive example of the role that civic organizations can play in a community, and to commend the Sons of Italy Lodge 321 for the work it has done in the past and hopefully will continue to do for the next 100 years. Madam President, I move this.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Ferrari, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations again.
Congratulations. Commissioner Mayor, Member of the Council, thank you very much for recognizing our Italian Heritage Culture Month, and also on your citation for the Gabrielle di Anunzio Lodge 21, which has been in this, we have been serving this community for 100 years, and we were, the Lodge was instituted not too far from here, a couple of blocks, but you know, many Italians that come to the city, they made this their home, and they started businesses, and they, you know, they helped the community grow. We always had great help from the community and a lot of cooperation, and we hope that that'll continue so that we can move on to the next centennial, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to Schenectady is the Place, Mr. Ferrari.
Invite Mr. Brecker to come forward.
Madam President.
You have the floor.
This is a resolution declaring Schenectady is the place to be an official city song. Whereas Schenectady's residents have always been passionate about their community, and whereas a number of talented people from Schenectady County Community College have taken it upon themselves to celebrate our city's history and future by writing a song, and whereas that song titled Schenectady is the Place was written by SCCC Instructor of Music Cliff Brecker, and the vocals were performed by Amanda Cuthbert and Brendan Donovan, and whereas the song showcases the city and encourages people to visit and live here, and whereas the lyrics "Just look at us today, a renaissance is underway, a community reborn, success is here to stay" perfectly expresses the state of our city. Now therefore it be resolved that the Mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and the City Council do hereby pause in their deliberations to thank those who gave their time and efforts to create this song and are proud to declare it an official song of this city. Madam President, I'd like to move this.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Mudavaren, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Two weeks and two resolutions, I can get used to this. Honorable Mayor, Honorable President, and City Council Members, we appreciate all the hard work you do, and I've become so tired of, I was just telling Commissioner Bennett that I don't have XM radio anymore, so I'm forced to listen to talk radio, and my God, the things people say about our city, it's just unbelievable, I mean, it's so negative out there, and I'm like, so I really wanted to write a song that really expressed a positive, uplifting, good feeling about Schenectady, and all the things that we've represented from the past, and then the second verse, of course, everything that's happening in the future, thanks to all your good work, and I also wanted to showcase the great community college we have at SCCC with Dr. Meckley allowing me to use the new studio there, state-of-the-art studio, and all the faculty are all virtuosian solo musicians, and the students are phenomenal, and it was just a great opportunity to come together and create something really positive, something I might want to do for a long time, and it's my gift to the city, whoever's in the chair, I hope everybody uses this song for whatever purposes they need, and once again, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Cliff. And for those of you who watched the council meeting two weeks ago, you got to hear the song. All right, let's move on to October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, Ms. Porterfield. Invite members from the Fire Department and Department's Foundation to come forward. You have the floor.
A resolution declaring the Month of October 2015 to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas the Month of October is recognized as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and October 21st, 2015 is recognized as National Mammography Day, and whereas mammography and x-ray of the human breasts is recognized as the single most effective method of detecting breast cancer, breast changes that may be cancer long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt, and whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, breast cancer is the most common form of cancer among women and the second highest cause of cancer death among women, and whereas there are certain, there are several types of breast cancer which can be divided into non-invasive and invasive types, and can be diagnosed at different stages of development and can grow at different rates, and whereas in 2015, the National Cancer Institute estimates that 231,840 new cases of invasive breast cancer are expected to be diagnosed in women and 2,350 cases in men, and whereas in order to facilitate early diagnosis and prompt treatment of breast cancer in women and men, public education, awareness, and understanding of the disease is necessary. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and the City Council do hereby pause in their deliberations to proclaim the Month of October to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Schenectady, in remembrance of those who have lost their lives to breast cancer, and in support of those who currently fighting, who are currently fighting this disease. Madam President, I'd like to move the resolution.
Okay, move, seconded by Mr. Mudavaren, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam President, Mr. Mayor, we always are so honored when you guys recognize us for this, it's obviously something very near and dear to our hearts, we're exposed to things every single day in the course of regular business, and we're finding that they're discovering cancers that we never even considered before, so recognition in October for Breast Cancer Awareness Month is amazing, and we are extremely appreciative, and we're very appreciative to the community for their support of us as well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything?
Assistant Chief and I are here, really just sort of support for the work that the men and women do with the foundation, it's unbelievable, they recently had a golf outing, I believe, you might want to mention the shirts that you're selling currently, they put on a comedy show, it's just unbelievable the work that they do all on their own time, so to them, all the support and all the recognition goes to firefighter parlatory and cap'n'keel.
We'd love for you to check our website, neverfightalone.org, we constantly have updates on our events and things that we're doing to fundraise, so that's the best place to find out what's going on, thank you again.
And thank you for all the work that you're doing.
As many of you have heard me say, I'm a 21-year breast cancer survivor, so I really appreciate the work the Department and the Foundation does in bringing awareness, and you know, can't stress the importance of early detection, so again, thank you very much. All right, and then we'll go on to Stop Domestic Violence, Ms. Parrazo. You have the floor.
Thank you, this is a resolution declaring the Month of October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas when a family member is abused, it can have long-term damaging effect on the victim, that may also leave a mark on family, friends, and the community at large, and whereas domestic violence is widespread and devastating to society as a whole, but particularly in women and children, and whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers, and is sustained by societal indifference, and whereas victims should have help, excuse me, should have help to find the compassion, comfort, and healing they need, and domestic abusers should be punished to the fullest extent of the law, and whereas the city encourages domestic violence victims and their families to seek assistance from appropriate victims' services organizations, and New York State Domestic Violence Hotline, which is 1-800-942-6096, and I'll say that again, 1-800-942-6096. Whereas the city is committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and its prevalence, and to eliminating it through prevention and education, now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and the City Council do hereby pause in their deliberations to proclaim the Month of October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Schenectady in recognition of the important work done by domestic violence programs, and to urge all citizens to actively seek to eliminate all forms of domestic violence in this community. Madam President, I move the resolution.
Okay, move, seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And being committed to educating the public about domestic violence, Kim Siciliano is here for the while, I'll let you introduce your colleague to give us a presentation about a new initiative that they've put forth, the High Risk Task Force.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to just move over here for a second, I'm going to put this down. Madam President, Mr. Mayor, and City Council Members, on behalf of the YWCA of New York, and the staff, and the thousands of victims and their families that we serve each year, I thank you for giving us the ceremonial resolution and recognition of the work that the YW does to bring about domestic violence awareness in our community, and to offer a safe haven for victims in their darkest hours. We could not do this without the support of the city of Schenectady and the many community partners we work with every day. The YW will recognize 40 long years of hard work, grassroots effort, since our domestic violence shelter was opened in 1976. We will honor all of the victims who have lost their lives, and also who can now call themselves survivors, because they realize they no longer stood alone and they broke free from their abuse. The YW is there to support, guide, and empower them. We will honor the staff and volunteers from 40 years ago who paved the way, and those who are now fighting to eliminate domestic violence as advocates, counselors, shelter workers, and community outreach workers. The journey continues on, and we must come together as a community to stop the violence, find our strength, and bring domestic violence to an end. So I have Kim Schoenberg here with me today, she is the Advocate Supervisor, and she oversees in part with Wendy Gachinsky Beckering, who is on vacation, our high-risk team, so I wanted to speak a little bit about that, I have some handouts which Kim's going to help me with, and we're going to kind of give you some information about this high-risk team, so if you could, Kim, if you want, okay. So the high-risk team was established about two years ago with funding from the Office for the Prevention of Domestic Violence, and we were given the goal of creating a team with the Schenectady Police Department, the District Attorney's Office, as well as the Sheriff's Department and probation, and the YWCA is the lead agency. It is a high-risk domestic violence team which allows us to, as Councilwoman Parrazo said, hold perpetrators accountable as well as keeping victims safe in their homes. So our purpose is to make sure that we are providing an umbrella of services to our victims, allowing them to feel safer thereby following through with the legal issues that are necessary in order to make sure that they become free from their perpetrators. So what Kim does is she oversees, there are now seven advocates who work in the Police Department, work at Child Protective Services, as well as work in Family Court, to support victims who come into those agencies looking for help, and then what we do is the police officers actually do a lethality assessment on scene, so they walk into a domestic incident, they do a lethality assessment, they ask questions of the victim, trying to gauge where that victim is in their safety plan. Then when we finally get ahold of them, and then I'm going to let Kim tell you about that.
On a daily basis, we actually get copies of those police reports with that risk assessment, and from there, we can establish prioritizing which cases need immediate attention. There are certain questions on the risk assessment that will be a trigger for a victim being in more danger, some of those could be if they've ever made threats to kill, if he has ever strangled the victim, if he has ever used a weapon, or if he is extremely jealous or has any kind of stalking obsession, and another one would be if he ever harmed the victim while she was pregnant. From this risk assessment, we're able to determine a timeline with the victim to look at the pattern of behavior for the perpetrator, and through that, we're able to develop a safety plan. We have outside agencies that are involved with the high-risk team, which we depend on incredibly, and that's the District Attorney's Office, the Probation Department, the Police Department, and the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you very much. So once we've assessed that maybe a case needs to go to the high-risk team, all of those entities get together that Kim just listed, and we meet monthly, cases are brought forth, and then we look at what, how they kind of were graded, I guess is the word to use, on the danger assessment that the advocates have completed, so they go from like not very dangerous to extreme danger, so those cases that are extreme danger cases are brought forth to the high-risk team, and they're voted upon by all members that are on the team, so each entity gets a vote, and I have given you a sheet that lists, to date, we've had 41 cases that have been brought forth to the team, and you can see the types of work that we've done with those cases and some of the outcomes. The purpose is to keep victims in their homes, not to have them go into shelter, and as you can see, only one victim actually went into shelter out of the 41 cases, but we have worked with to date 1,628 cases, and that's just since 2014, and then 610 sheltered clients, so we're over 2,000 clients over a two-year period, and that includes those 41 cases. So we're talking high volumes of domestic violence happening in Schenectady, and with the support of the city of Schenectady, we're hoping that we are decreasing those numbers, and the high-risk team allows us to do that by focusing on those higher-risk cases and really working together with the DA's office, with the Police Department, to make sure the perpetrator's being held accountable, and that the victim is safe. We also work with Albany Protective Services, which allows us to put alarms in victims' houses, and then they're allowed to then, again, stay in their homes and create a safety plan from there, and continue to go to work, and continue to have their children in school, which is key for many of our victims, because when we speak about domestic violence, it is not just physical, it is verbal, it is emotional, it is financial, many of our victims come to us with nothing, and then we help to rebuild and work them back to being empowered and back in the community as viable community members doing what they need to do to live their lives, and that's really key. So the one other thing I'm going to give you is that we have our Take Back the Night March coming up, which Kim will pass around, it is the 22nd, it is so that everyone can be safe, we'd love to have as many people as we could there, Councilwoman Parrazo will be there speaking for us, as well as we've invited District Attorney Bob Carney, as well as Chief Brian Kilcullen, so we'd love to have as many of you come, it's our Take Back the Night March, Thursday, October 22nd, it's at the YW, we have opening speakers, and then we march the streets, and really try to make people feel safe again, and support safety for everyone in the city of Schenectady. And then we have our Purple Purse Challenge, which allows us to help victims financially, so I'll just pass that around, get some information on it, but that's all of this happening in the Month of October, and their campaign is make the invisible visible, one in four women experiences domestic violence in their lifetime, so who's your one in four? What is the, who is the woman that you know who's had some type of domestic violence in their life? So that's a great opportunity for you to go on, and that talks about financial abuse and how women can come out of that, so I just want everybody to have that, and lastly, there's an article on the high-risk team that allows you to kind of know what a lethality assessment is, the danger assessment, and all of the information about how the team progressed. So currently, we are still running the team, even though that the grant has dissolved, we are now receiving money through VAWA, which is the Violence Against Women Act, Stop Grant Money, and we do that in partnership with the DA's office, and the Police Department, and the Sheriff's Department, as well as probation are still working with us even without funding, because that's how important this team is, to make sure that domestic violence is at the forefront, that we are aware of it, and that we are doing everything we can to stop it as a community. So I appreciate your time, we are very honored to receive this resolution, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, that's very good information. All right, we have two public hearings tonight, the first is on the 2016 Proposed Budget, I have two people who signed All right, we have two public hearings tonight. The first is on the 2016 proposed budget. I have two people who signed up to speak, Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council Mayor. Couple things in the budget itself. One of them is the Fair Housing Coordinator. You're giving the person a nine-thousand-dollar pay raise. About a couple years back, you had dropped the Fair Housing Coordinator down to around thirty-nine thousand. It's now up to forty-four, and now you're proposing it to go to about fifty-four thousand. You know, I mean, this is, we don't understand what's going on here. Why, I mean, why are you giving these people this amount of a pay raise? You said that we were gonna stop that a couple years back, and now it's right into the budget. I mean, then on top of all, three or four years ago, you gave the other Fair Housing Coordinator, when you transferred over to homeownership, nearly a fifteen-thousand-dollar pay raise. So these pay raises are extram, extram, extravagant. The other piece is the Community Development Block Grants. We're supposed to have a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grants for the items that, when you do, for staff. One of the major areas that we're concerned about is the Community Development Block Grant for the Affirmative Action Officer and Manager. What's going on? You know, we need to have adjustment of what's happening. We're getting information through, it's like pulling hen's teeth. And we're not even complying with the federal and state mandates on affirmative action. And, you know, these are some of the things. We've had, we've had staff come back and says, "Well, give us names of people who are qualified." Well, all you have to do is go down to 797 Broadway there, to the, to the Employment Office. They've got all the names in the world for qualified people that would be able to qualify for these jobs. But you keep signing on PLA agreements, Project Labor Agreements with unions for union-only jobs. And they only represent between forty to forty-five percent of the, of the population, and they're mostly out of Albany and Troy. They're not even Schenectadians. You know, so I mean, some of this budget needs to take a look at that. The other piece of it is the Disability Parking Educational Fund, or known as the Handicap Parking Surcharge. You had in 2015, a little over thirty-nine-hundred, and then you're budgeting twenty-five-hundred for this thing. Half of that goes to the city, I mean, to the county, and half goes to the city. So there's never been, in the whole entire history of this Department of Educational Fund, has been over four thousand that the city has collected. And there's over, well over twenty-eight thousand dollars sitting in that fund. So, and that doesn't represent what's actually into that piece. And that money is earmarked for programs of discussing on disability parking. So that's another error within the budget itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary McLean. Okay, thank you. All right, then I'm gonna declare this public hearing closed. The second public hearing is about the abandonment of Water Street. I have no one signed up to speak, but I am gonna call on Mr. Strickman to come up and just explain what this is about.
Thank you. The abandonment of Water Street is the beginning of the expansion of Liberty Park, which is part of a two-year, two-part study, well-attended by downtown residents, businesses, and supported, and then adopted by the City Council, and culminated in a four-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from the Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation to expand Liberty Park. So this will start next year. It will expand over Water Street, which requires the abandonment of the street. Currently, the street has been shut down at Washington Avenue now for a year, with no significant impacts on traffic. The abandonment will also have it shut down at Railroad Avenue, and with its entrance at Church Street as well, and will require the eventual granting of a restrictive covenant to New York State. That will, this will remain forever wild. So basically, it's a great expansion and improvement of Liberty Park that will act as a centerpiece for future development downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on then to approval of the minutes from September twenty-eighth, 2015. Mr. Kosher moves it, seconded by Mr. Mutavaren, all in favor? Aye. Okay, excuse me, pardon?
I'd just like to make a correction to the minutes, where it says that for the Hamilton Hill Neighborhood Association, for the meeting last week, it was actually the monthly meeting, not the annual meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got that, it was the monthly meeting, not the annual meeting, the Hamilton Hill? Okay. All right, then I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as corrected. Mr. Kosher, seconded by Mr. Mutavaren, all in favor? Aye, thank you. Communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, October thirteenth, 2015. Under official, from the mayor, a list of appointments dated October thirteenth, 2015. Under general, there are none. Under petitions, a petition to reconstruct Oxford Place and Maryland Avenue Streets.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Looks like no, okay. We move to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda, but I have no one signed up for that. So I will entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda. Mr. Kosher, seconded by Mr. Ferrari, all in favor? Aye. And we will move to privilege of the floor regarding city business. I have six people signed up. The first is Dave Monte.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Chairperson, and councilmembers. I'm Dave Monte. I am the Operations Manager for Side-by-Side Storage on Crane Street in Schenectady. And I wanted to come tonight just to let everyone know that we have just put in over a million dollars into this facility on Crane. We put in new buildings, all new units. We've cleaned up that property immensely. We used to have Luther's Ice Cream on one side. We bought that, tore it down, put up a new building, all new landscaping. Well, this Saturday, we're having an open house, and we would like to have all you come and visit, and see what the facility looks like now, than what it did a few years back. I've talked to a lot of neighbors over in that area, and they've all even said that, some of them didn't even know there were storage units in the place. We took out all the trees, we took out everything. We've really made it nice. And even a, a family moved in across the street and tore, well, they're redoing that entire house, making that look gorgeous from the outside now. So we are revitalizing the Crane Street area down on our end. And as I say, we're having an open house this Saturday, the seventeenth, from eleven to four. Mr. Mayor said he's gonna be there. We're gonna have like a little ribbon cutting for the building. The building, we're hoping that it's gonna be a hundred percent done. The plumbers are there now, putting in the finishing touches on the handicap bathroom. And the blacktop people are gonna be there tomorrow, we're having it all blacktopped. And hopefully, this spring, we're putting up another hundred and fifty units on the slab that we put up this past spring. So I hope to see everybody there. We have food, hamburgs, hot dogs, salads, cold drinks, coffees. So hopefully, you guys will come and see me, and see all of the rest of the neighborhood. It's open to the entire Mount Pleasant area, City of Schenectady. I just went and picked up a big sign from Pastor Charlie Muller in Albany, so we can put out front and advertise it. So now I'm on my way to Charlie's to get the letters, 'cause he forgot to give them to me. But we're, we've got it there, and I hope to see all you guys there to visit us, and see what we've done there.
Mr. Monte, can you give us the address?
Pardon me?
Could you give the address, the street address?
Oh, it's fifteen twenty-four Crane Street. It's like on the corner of Lakeview and Crane. So come on out and have some fun that day.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Thanks for your investment, too. Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council Mayor. October is Disability Employment Awareness Month. Just wanted to be able to bring awareness to some of the jobs that are not being available within the city. Of course, with the contracts that were signed as of Oc, as of March, new regulations under federal contracts, that you've gotta have a seven percent participation rate. Schenectady County is the worst county in the state for hiring persons with disabilities. I also wanted to be able to make a mention that in both the Gazette and the Times Union, in the end of April, had said that Metroplex had falsified the documents of the jobs reports of the, and quoted the New York State Comp Controller. And they put this New York State Comp Controller's website for the report. And it basically said that Ray Gillan had falsified the documents, and that was in Appendix B, and they verified it in Appendix, re, allocated it in Appendix C of that document. One of the things that they also had said was is that Metroplex was not recouping the dollars of the cost-benefit analysis, and it, they also said that the seven thousand jobs that were created was falsified, that there was not seven thousand jobs created. And that the jobs that were counted as seven thousand were moving like from Rotterdam to the city. They claimed seven hundred jobs from that. Or they reclaimed six hundred jobs were created out of the GE area, when it's down to around three hundred to two hundred, depending on what the numbers are. Those numbers were not there. Also, too, is these jobs were not even identified whether or not if the people lived within the City of Schenectady. And also, too, is it also identified many of the different properties of what was happening, where the actual tenants were not getting the money, but the actual developers were getting it, and they were asking for recalculations of that piece. So, you know, when we're looking at affirmative action, and we're looking at the jobs within the city, there are some major things that need to happen. Both the mayor's appointment to Metroplex and the city council's appointment needs to be able to act on the behalf of the city council when it's, and the mayor's position at Metroplex. And we need to be able to take a look at what's going on, of actually where is this actual jobs are. Because there are no seven thousand jobs, that's totally false. And that's by the New York State Comp Controller actually did the report. So this isn't some political, or some other, people are saying from other groups. And we need to address what's going on, especially with our affirmative action officer not doing her job, and we just lost our affirmative action officer, unfortunately, the wrong way of losing the person. And we need to figure out where this is gonna happen, because the county did not budget for this affirmative action officer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary McLean.
Good evening, my name is Mary McLean, I live in the city. If my comments gave anyone the impression that I did not like the flower baskets hanging from the downtown light poles, that was not my intent. I object to the mix that was added to the original plan. This summer, the poles were to feature live flowers in hanging baskets. Someone wanted American flags, so the flags were hung on the poles. Others wanted banners, and their wishes were fulfilled. Consequently, the downtown was left with honky-tonk. It doesn't happen in other nearby cities. It shouldn't happen here, which brings me to another point. I want to correct the statement that I made during the last city council meeting. It was an honest mistake. The comments refer to the four picnic tables introduced on the lawn of City Hall this year. It was dusk when I left the committee meeting on September twenty-first. From my vantage point at the top of the steps, it looked like three tables were painted a rust color, and one set was painted blue, and I so stated in my remarks. Such is not the case. When I saw the sets in daylight, every table was painted a different color. That is more objectionable. Those colors belong in a kindergarten classroom. The colors are out of place on the lawn of a stately historic building. Once again, no thought was given to the beauty of the surroundings. Someone had an idea, and it ended up in the wrong place. On another point, at the committee meeting last week, an agenda item was about the streets and sidewalks. No one mentioned a beautification or the final look of a finished project. The city engineers stressed functionalism, and council members talked cost. As I mentioned two weeks ago, the city needs a beautification committee, people who will embrace the comprehensive plan and make all neighborhoods look beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Hall.
Speaking about streets, I'm Joy Hall, Schenectady. I tell ya, some of the sidewalks, I hide gaps in them, that's unsafe. That's gotta be fixed. Down around here, over across the street, up landing terrace, too. I mean, a lot of streets, somebody could fall down and get hurt. I don't wanna see that happen at all. I wanna see the sidewalks fixed, the curbs fixed, before something does happen. So we gotta do something about it before it happens. I don't wanna see it hap, 'cause I see a lot of gaps in the sidewalks. Right, right around here, too, over across the street, everywhere else. I've seen it. Every day, I see something new. I never know what the spec. I'm just letting you know, something's gotta be done.
Thank you. Mohammed Haifaz.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, council members. My name is Mohammed Haifaz, and I live in Schenectady. I did bring the wrong speech, but I do have one good page here, so it's gonna be short. Last Saturday, we went to Ferrari's Restaurant to hear what the mayor has to say about the service to Mount Pleasant. I asked a couple of casino questions, of course, and more about not having police presence in, on Crane Street, or not enough of it, not enough of police presence. The small amount of money Mount Pleasant is getting for its parks, the condition of the streets and sidewalks in Mount Pleasant, and why aren't we getting any share of money like downtown? The mayor didn't give us many answers to these questions, and he later changed the subject. And then he said to me that I no longer, I, along with other landlords, don't wanna, don't want the rental certificate law enforced, and I always challenge it. Well, what did, what did that have to do with Mount Pleasant? I don't know. Nevertheless, I'd like to inform the mayor that landlords simply challenged the improper enforcement of the law by the city code enforcement officers. What we stress is that inspections are done either by consent of the landlord or even the tenant, or by a warrant signed by a judge. And that the city cannot intimidate the landlords into consenting to allow code enforcement officers inside our properties. And that the city cannot penalize us even for not consenting to inspection. These are property owners' rights, and also landlords' legal rights, that are protected under state and federal laws, and of course, the United States Constitution. Since I had the wrong speech, there was one comment made, or a couple of people actually commented on, at the Bellevue City, City Council debate, they said that Pittsburgh had a lot less crime than expected. Actually, they phrased it differently, but that's exactly what the quote is. And somebody commented that the decrease in crime is really a high in the sky notion, and that's what it is. It's a high in the sky notion. Maybe next time I'll have a better speech on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Eugene Jackson. Okay, I have no one else then signed up, so I'm gonna declare this portion of the meeting closed, and we'll move to miscellaneous business of the council. Ms. Prazo.
Thank you. Very exciting, Puzzles Bakery and Cafe on State Street, five fifteen Straight Street to be exact, was featured on the National CBS Nightly News on Saturday. And if you're not familiar with Puzzles, it's owned by Sarah May Hickey, and it's designed and built to employ people on the autism spectrum. So it's a wonderful, wonderful example of the great things happening in Schenectady that reach beyond the boundaries of our city and go nationwide. So it's very exciting to see, and congratulations to Sarah May and all of the really wonderful work she's doing down there. Give Graffiti the Brush has just finished its third successful season. For those of you who travel west on 890 and get off on the Michigan Avenue off-ramp, you will now notice that entire wall has been cleaned up of a tremendous slathering of graffiti. So it was my, it was my goal project all year to get done. There was a lot of moving parts with the Department of Transportation and such, but we got that done among, you know, among a myriad of projects that we did all over the city. And people often ask me about re-tagging, and I have to go through and actually count the numbers, but I think the majority of our properties stay clean. If they do get re-tagged, we go right back and cover them up again. So we're having pretty good luck. And in the meantime, of course, other spots are popping up, but, you know, we're doing something, and we're moving in a forward direction. So I feel good about that. Also, recently, been asked to be the chair of the Vale Park Task Force, which has not been active in a couple of years. So we have started meeting about Vale Park. I know the city has done some work to get the lights up and running again properly. And we just happened to coincide with a National Day of Service of Union College, which is this Saturday. So we will have 40 volunteers going into the park and the cemetery to clean up, remove some graffiti, paint the fence, clean up flower beds, pick up litter, all sorts of really wonderful, wonderful things. So more news to follow as we work our way through the winter and onward towards spring, and, and the recommendations we might have for Vale Park, but stay tuned on that, because it's really quite exciting. Just to add a little more information to Mr. Strickman's presentation on Liberty Park, I also want to make it known that the berms are being removed. I know that's been an issue for people. We've had people come to the rail and talk about it, and, you know, that's certainly something that was taken into strong consideration when redesigning the park, and that will be, I believe, one of the first things we tackle. In the meantime, I know that recently, some overgrown brush and, and cleanup has happened at that park. So also, very welcomed. And as for our picnic tables outside City Hall, from what I understand, the Pride Festival donated those to City Hall, and they are fabulously bright and beautiful, and they can make me happy when I see families sitting at them during the green market, and when I see City Hall employees sitting at them. So I guess beauty is in the eye of the beholder, because I think they are bright and beautiful, and I think they represent the diversity in our city, and I thank the Pride Committee and Festival for donating them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Iggy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hope some of us can get down there Saturday to see that grand opening. That is quite a development on that blighted corner of Crane Street, Lakeview and Van Belson. So they did a nice job, and it looks good. I just want to bring people, make people aware, I know I've heard this before, but our household received a phone call today from someone stating they're from the IRS, and the IRS is filing a lawsuit and to call a certain number. Well, I know one thing, I've never been sued by the IRS, but I don't think they're going to do it by a telem, telemarketing phone call, that's for sure. I think we're going to receive some kind of letter first stating that. But I'm really concerned that there's some people that may be taken in by this scam. I have a number, and I don't know what I should do with it, or where it comes out of Washington, but it, it's kind of scary that people would prey on those that can't really defend themselves and probably scam them out of some money. So I just want to make people aware of that. As a matter of fact, they called back again, twice, because the first one was a message, and I answered the second one. It was, it was just a robo-call. But it's just kind of sad, because it sounds kind of official, and some people may buy it. So just for awareness. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. I'd like to make an announcement regarding a forum that's going to be held tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM at the First United Methodist Church, and it's, it's How to Reduce Community Violence by Employing Street Savvy Change Agents. It's going to be presented by Devon Boggan, who is the Director of Office at Neighborhood Safety from Richmond, California. And in Richmond, they were having a very severe problem with, with armed firearm assaults and homicides, and there was a 76% reduction in homicides and 69% reduction from 2007. So Mr. Boggan's going to be here to describe how this was accomplished, and with the Operation Peacemaker Fellowship Program. So it is free and open to the public. Again, it's at 7:00 PM tomorrow evening at First United Methodist Church. And so if folks want to come, certainly they are welcome to come, and there will be refreshments following the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mootivaren.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to address a few questions that was brought over the weekend to my attention regarding Mount Pleasant, as to what the city and the mayor is doing in terms of Mount Pleasant. And just want to provide the most accurate information as possible in terms of building that was demolished. We have 15 buildings that was demolished during 2011 and planned for 2016. And to date, we have 40th project worth over $1 million, and this including home improvements and renovation, and this is an ongoing project, not only in Mount Pleasant, but throughout the city, that we're investing in all our neighborhoods. And in terms of the accurate number of street paving and schedule of street to be paved by the end of 2016, we have about 28.4% of street that would be paved in Mount Pleasant. And I'm not saying Mount Pleasant only, but just a comparison, but this question was asked of me. Throughout the city, the pavements are happening. And also, in terms of equipments for park, we have $45,000 going to Quaken Bush Park to fund new playground equipment. And this is happening throughout the city, where each neighborhood is getting a portion of the $250,000 allocated for the 2015 budget. And I want to remind people that we, we would like more in Mount Pleasant, but look at next year, we'll have more. Just to address, the town, the Schenectady Premier League would like to extend their thank you to you for last Sunday, that you graced their occasion, and Ms. Prazzo also. They are happy that you were there and to be one of the sponsors for the event, and wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Want to just thank the council for the work they're doing on the budget. We look forward to bringing it to a timely conclusion.
Just on behalf of the city, want to extend sympathy to Ed O'Brien, his family, friends, and colleagues at Channel 6, had passed away yesterday, long battle with cancer. You know, he was an individual that always had the ability to take complicated issues, reduce them out in a manner that were understandable, and had a sense of humor, and was really just a great asset and an advocate for the community and the region, so that he'll truly be missed. Thank you, Madam President.
And I have nothing else to add, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kozier, seconded by Mr. Mootivaren, all in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.